Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, officers and councillors. This is the reconvened planning meeting. We had problems with the lift last time and so we were unable to hold the meeting. It was inaccessible to all members of the public. We had a blip yesterday when the lift broke down again with somebody in it. Anyway, I just mentioned that the vice-chair managed to come off in the lift and so it should be okay now. It is, I've forgotten the date, 7th of October, Friday 7th of October at 9:30 and we're about to start the morning session of our planning committee. My name is Therese Evans, councillor Therese Evans, and I am the chair of the committee. Next to me is councillor Jane Rutter, who's the vice-chair, and on either sides of the room, and they've all got nameplates in front of them, are the councillors who make up the rest of the committee. To my left, we've got Fiona Sutherland is our legal adviser, and Julie Pinnock, who is the service lead for the Burnton Built Environment, and then Eric Cannon is acting as the clerk and operating the clock for the meeting. Also got, we should have the case officer, Megan Osborne, but if we've, yes, no, I know, Shaun, but I was just explaining, they've taken the nameplate away, but until very recently it said Megan Osborne. But we've got Shaun Quigley, who is presenting the application, first application today, and Lorna Hotchings, and I've forgotten your grand title, implementation manager. So, welcome to everybody. Just a few details to go through, first of all, should there be a fire, sounds and alarm, we're not expecting one, so take it as for real, and the exit points are the door over there, not using the lift, and you will be indicated if it's down the stairs there. The assembly point is in Abbey Gardens, which is right next to the Guildhall. Please, could you make sure that your phones are turned to silent or turned off? And just to remind you that this session is recorded live and then it's placed on the council's YouTube for people to view afterwards. So, we move to the first item on the agenda, apologies and deputy members.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies for absence received from councillor McLean, with councillor Cook deputising. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any disclosures of interest? Councillor Clear?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I wish to declare a personal but not prejudicial interest in respect of item 13, land south-west of Oakdean, Southwick Road, Wickham. I am one of the ward members for the area, but I have not been involved with the application in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mine is the same, because I'm also a ward member for Southwick and Wickham. Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I need to declare a personal and non-prejudicial interest in first item, the Alpines. I am in fact the chair of Headborne Worthy Parish Council, which is objecting, but I took no part in any of the discussions around that decision. I can't make decisions about planning matters that are discussed, so I...
Thank you. Councillor Pearson?
So, along similar lines, although I'm not in the parish council, item 14, the Brambles, I'm a ward councillor for that, declares in the agenda that there's no ward councillor, well, I'm a ward councillor, for that area. I've not had anything whatsoever to do with the application.
No, thank you very much. Then we move on to the next item on the agenda, which in its previous meeting, we are on page nine to thirteen of our report. Could we agree those?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. Then we have an update sheet for today's meeting. Could we accept that as a standard to...
Agreed.
Thank you. So we move on to the first application, which is on the screen in front of us, is the Alpines, School Lane, Headborne Worthy, direction of one new dwelling, 22-01617-FUL. So, case officer, as I've already said, is Shaun Quigley today. Shaun, when you're ready, we're ready to...
Thank you, Chair. As you said, this is a site called the Alpines, which is off School Lane. Got a plan there showing the site hatched at School Lane, running north-south, and that's Wellhouse Lane to the north on the other boundary. The star shows the approximate location of the dwelling in the grounds of Alpines, an existing detached house on the site. It's an aerial shot showing the site. Obviously, a lot of space at the back of the existing house, that house is actually gone now and there's a replacement dwelling in its place. The proposal is to put a house, a new house, in the garden of the replacement house. The other feature of that is in this, in the corner there, you can see a footpath which is referred to in the report. This is an extract of the local plan policy map, showing the strategic designations, those being CP18, which is a strategic gap policy, a gap policy, seeks to maintain the openness between Winchester on the left and Headborne Worthy on the right. The WT2 designation is Kings Barton, the Kings Barton Development. Red part is the built development. Patch part on the right is the open space associated with that built development. This is a detailed block plan of the site, showing the existing house in the white area, new house, proposed new house to the left, shown in darker colours. There's an elevation, mainly single-storey with a first-floor top, more elevations, round four plan, first four plan. That's a photograph from the School Lane frontage, showing a existing house which is unoccupied at the moment. One to the left is the replacement dwelling, in whose garden it is proposed to build the new dwelling. That's the replacement dwelling, so that's the frontage of the development site we're talking about. That's a view to the right of the existing house, looking into the development site, so the proposed dwelling will be on that site, as we can see it, with the open space beyond those trees. A closer in-shot of the same thing. And that's a view, as the arrow shows, across where the actual building would be, towards existing dwellings to the south of the site, which are referred to in the report. And finally, that's a view up towards the site, from the open space associated with Kings Barton, the west. And again, those paths are referred to in the report, they're not rights of way, but they are established, paths properly laid out. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Shaun. So we move on to the public speaking, and first of all, we have an objector, Gordon Hawkes. Good morning, Mr Hawkes. If you'd like to use either of the microphones, and you might like to move it slightly nearer you, and there's a red button at the bottom.
Can you hear me?
The screen in front of you will show you your time, which is three minutes, and when you're ready, please start.
Thanks for the opportunity this morning. I have two concerns. The main concern is regarding the access road to this property. Firstly, I think the development site will set a precedent for the house next door, or the property next door to Chesimy, which is the Haven. The building and land have been stripped, ready for redevelopment. Any decision on this planning application today will set a precedent for two buildings to be built on the site of the Haven. If planning permission for this Chesimy development is granted, is there a possibility that the development becomes part of a much larger proposal, linking the Chesimy development site with the site of the Haven, using the proposed access road to all of the properties, creating much more traffic on the access road? Photograph the street view submitted in the design and access statement stating there is no visibility view of the proposed development was taken too far down Wellhouse Lane to show the real view of the site and the access road. The development can be seen from the road and from the properties on Wellhouse Lane opposite the site. Both are visible from our property and the property of the neighbours in Wellhouse Lane, directly opposite the proposed development site and the access road. It runs the full length of the boundary, which is several hundred yards. Our upstairs windows will be overlooked and will be affected by the access road. The access road runs at the same height as the top of our house. The boundary bank is already falling away, having been disturbed by the development vehicles for the last two years. Many of the trees have been removed. Those that are left are deciduous, including ash, would die back so often, they'll offer no screen from the new development and the access road. In the photographs submitted with the design proposal, it appears that the applicants have already built the access road, assuming that planning approval has been granted. In the response to the previous application on this development site that was not approved, it stated that there must be a five-metre buffer between the site boundary and early development. I'm assuming this would be between the boundary and the proposed access road. The photographs show that this has not been considered. The access road to the development site raises most concern. The planning statement advises that it will be parking for four cars, will of course be visiting vehicles as well, day and night, which could include motorbikes and any other transport vehicles that could make significantly more noise than a car. And of course, there will be lights from the vehicles at night. Delivery is everywhere these days, and taxis could be very active day and night in cars and on motorbikes, bringing with them noise pollution with the potential to regularly disturb our sleep. There's no indication how the access road would be finished, nor is there any indication of the installation of an acoustic fence along the complete length of the boundary to reduce noise. I ask you consider my concerns regarding the access road. Most of the comments supporting this proposed development are from people who do not live in the village, some don't even live in Hampshire, and will not be directly impacted. We live across the road from the proposed development, the access road as well, which is in full view from our and into our windows. Your decision to allow the access road in the development will significantly change the environment we all live in and enjoy.
Thank you. I was just about to say your time is up, but you've finished. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Please don't go, because there might be questions from the councillors for clarification. Councillors, any clarification questions? Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chair. You mentioned the access road has already been constructed.
I can only see from the photographs, and it appears that it is all being chalked out, ready to be laid as a road, and it runs the full length of the boundary, so I can only...
No surfacing has been put on it.
No surface has been put on, as far as I can see from the photo.
Any further questions? Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask the resident, if I may, you referred to windows being overlooked. Would you mind if I asked which windows it was?
We have a bathroom window, a landing window, and there are two upstairs windows.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
So, thank you very much, Mr Hawkes, for coming along today, so if you'd like to go back to your seat, thank you very much. And then the last public speakers are the supporters, Jeremy Tyrrell and Lee Scott. Good morning, gentlemen. So, I've just heard that you've got a presentation, so that's part of the three minutes, is that correct? Yeah. So, you know the routine, because you've both been here before. So, the time will come up on the screen, and I will have to stop you after the three minutes have elapsed, so when you're ready.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Before I hand over to Jeremy to talk about the design of the scheme, sorry, a bit of feedback on it, I thought I'd just talk over some of the planning policy points.
Sorry, could you just move the microphone?
Is that better? Sorry. Big one. So, I'm personally not sure that policy MTR-A3, because that's the main point of difference here, I think, intends to resist this type of development. Site is already residential garden, and at the time of the local plan production, would have been classed as brownfield land under PPS3. Of course, under the 2017 Dartford case, which some of you may know about, it is deemed to be brownfield again. There is no specific planning policy governing development of residential gardens, so in this instance, the local plan should be read as a whole, in my view, and the key drive of the local plan is to make the best use of land and deliver good design, and I think that's what we do. The scheme has been improved compared with the previous refusal by having a much more sensitive design, and this has resulted in no objection from the council's landscape officer in terms of the impact on the gap under policy CP18. So, with that, I'm just going to talk about Jeremy, to hand over to Jeremy to talk about some of the actual details. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. The proposal before you follows the surrounding pattern of development. Character of School Lane will not be altered, the plots are so deep, this proposal will not be visible from the lane. Have the next slide, please. The character of Barton Meadows will not be altered, as the proposal will be less visible than the existing houses, which can be seen footpath. Precedent for built form in this area has already been set by Four Winds and Carl End, that you can see in this photograph. If they weren't there, we wouldn't be proposing this application, they provide the setting and the context for this. Next slide, please. We have looked at the previous refusal and come up with a much lower-rise design with a horizontal emphasis, which works with the topography and is very low impact. Next slide, please. Yes, the site is within the settlement gap, but so are all the houses on School Lane. Policy CP18 does not say there should be no development in the gap, it says, within these areas, only development that does not physically or visually diminish the gap will be allowed. A detailed landscape and visual impact assessment has been carried out, the conclusions of which your landscape officer agrees with. A consultation response reads, as the site is well-screened and not accessible, physically nor visually, this proposal is very unlikely to diminish the gap. In conclusion, we feel we have produced a high-quality design which causes no planning harm. We therefore ask that you take a balanced view on this application, please, and reconsider the recommendation put forward by your officer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well timed. Any questions of clarification? You're both agents, are you? Yeah. All the agents. No, thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming along this morning. Thank you. Shaun, anything you want to pick up from what you've heard in the public speaking? Or not?
Only to say, Chair, that the two chief policies which have identified are engagement physically into the gap that is intended to be maintained between Winchester and Headborne Worthy. Obviously, a built development, where there is no built development at the moment, will physically diminish that gap. That's a straightforward point. The other point is MTR-A3, which the speaker referred to, is very specific about what kind of development will take place within MTR-A3. That is, infilling of a small site within a continuously developed road frontage, which this isn't, and therefore it doesn't meet with MTR-A3.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Thank you. So, councillors, we move on then to the report, and the first item to consider is, sorry, the principle of development. We've just heard from the officer the reasons why it's been recommended for, if you so. Any questions on that? Councillor Pearson?
Yes, I think, asking for a short answer, but we seem to have a quandary here. It's in the settlement gap, which I agree should be preserved, but it's also a brownfield site, although this building is not actually on the same site as the building that was previously there. So, how do we resolve that difficulty, brownfield site and settlement gap?
Chair, although it could be regarded as brownfield land, i.e. previously used, but actually in residential use, that in itself doesn't overcome the policy difficulty of being in a location where the plan is very clear that this type of development shouldn't happen. Though whilst it's not, whilst it's obviously a good idea to use brownfield land, that consideration does not outweigh the basic policy issues which you have identified in the report.
If I may follow up on that, there's, Mr Hawkes referred to the possibility of development of the next-door site. Is that on track, or is that speculation? Because I can't see how that site will be accessed.
I'm not familiar with that.
Well, I mean, I'm only going by what we've got here on the report. The site, I think Mr Hawkes referred to, is what, Chesholt and the Haven, neither of which seem to have any access to School Lane, and maybe speculation that that site, if this site, the one we're talking about, is developed, that would give a presumption that the back of those two houses could also be developed. Is that speculation, or is that just a non-starter?
I'm not aware of any proposals to come forward. Obviously, it goes without saying that, you know, my job is to assess the application before us. So, yeah, I mean, I can, I can't really comment. I'm not aware of any development proposals, and if I'm not aware of them, I can't take them into account in this application.
Fiona, do you want to give us some legal advice?
Chair, I was just going to add that it is speculation, it's not material to determination of the application that you have in front of you.
Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chair. I'm trying to understand the process by which settlement gap land changes over time. I note the two houses, Four Winds and Carl End, I think it is, which are the furthest away from School Lane on the down the road. I have visited this site, I've walked along the path that you had referred to already. It seems to me that those are of relatively recent construction, Victorian houses, and I wondered what the planning process had been, and whether any precedent might have been set by those constructions.
I'm not really able to comment on the development of that area. You know, the main thrust of local plan policy is to, once settlement gaps have been identified, is to restrict development which is contrary to that aim within it generally, and I would say that sites on the boundary are particularly crucial in that objective.
Got your answer, no?
Yes.
Carry on.
I'm going to follow up. I appreciate that, you know, we don't have the files to hand on any planning applications that may be asked, but the general issue, and I'm just asking a genuinely, a question from genuine ignorance, how does a settlement gap boundary change over time, or doesn't it? Is it simply established at one point until a formal review some way down the line? Is it iterative, or is it fixed?
So, that when this local plan was developed, the strategic, spatial strategy was to concentrate new housing essentially within places where there is existing housing. It was seen as an objective to maintain the gaps between different settlements, and there's lots identified in the plan, so that those settlements don't merge together. When a new plan is emerging, as it is at the moment, the opportunity will be taken to review that policy, to assess whether it's been successful, or whether it should be maintained, and I imagine, I don't actually know, that that policy will be carried forward into the new plan, because it, in my view, it successfully prevented the merging of new settlements, if they did merge, would be contrary to the strategy.
Next, would you want to? That was probably a good answer.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. That was, that really gave the hierarchy, didn't it, of the local plan? I suppose you mentioned precedent earlier, and I just wanted to say, you know, you have to consider each case on its merits now, so you may well look at context and character, but we are governed by the development plan, which is both national guidance and our own adopted policy, so, you know, I know we talked about the gap, but this is also contrary to our MTR-A3 policy, in our view, Chair, so it's both. And policies over local plan timeframes change, but this policy has been in place, Chair, since, I'd say 2012 was part one, and 2017 was local plan part two, so it's a new strategy of the development plan.
Any further questions on the principle of development? Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chair. I must admit, I am struggling. Looking at page 33, shows the map, CP18, also is, do ascertain where the actual boundaries are. Normally, when you have a gap, well-defined boundary, but it seems to have a boundary. I'm trying to look up in the various... Second question, distance from the National Park.
That is in the report somewhere. Mr Quigley's got the answer.
So, in the presentation, there's the policy, that shows the defined boundaries of the settlement gap, CP18. It is, it has to be precisely defined, it is, you know, to show where it is. I'm not sure of the distance to the South Downs.
Thought I read it in the...
I'm being told one kilometer, approximately a kilometre.
Last week before, 471-page report.
Shall we move on then to the bottom of the page, 23, impact on the character and appearance of the area? And then the next section is indeed the development affecting the South Downs National Park, and there is the answer that we were looking for, it's one kilometre from the National Any questions on that? And then neighbouring amenities, sustainable transport and trees, we'll take those all And then we're looking at appropriate assessment. Could I just ask for a clarification? I could have looked it up in the dictionary, but it's been a busy week, of, you know, I can't even say it, uterification, I don't know how you say it.
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Could I ask for an explanation on that?
Yeah, it's uterification, Chair. I think I gave you... I think I gave you a poor explanation of that when you asked before, but it is written in the report on page twenty-five, and it says it is known as, a process known as utrophication, which promotes excess, excess growth of algae that chokes other life and leads to harmful effects on the Solent SPA. And that's really the definition, Chair, of what that means. It can damage the fresh water and the marine environment.
councillor Pearson?
Yes, in fact, my question continues on from yours, Chair. And the next paragraph to the one you quoted about the utrophication, some figure quoted there, I presume by the developer, which seem to be, we seem to need a translation, seem to be slightly different from those quoted by the chief planning officer in a letter of June of this year. She quoted eight milligrams per litre phosphates and twenty-seven milligrams per litre for nitrates. Could you translate some and how do those figures relate to each other?
Jim, and I don't.
Sorry, it's a technical question.
It is a very technical question. All I can say is that the developers submitted their nitrate budget, which would set out those.
So, so it doesn't matter if they are different?
I think provided Natural England are satisfied. Natural England set out the budget calculator anyway, which is on our web. That leads any applicant or developer through to explain what their existing inputs are, therefore what the outputs are, and Natural England would be. I can't comment further on that detail.
The chief planning officer also have the same calculator? I don't understand why the discrepancy between the figures, the chief planning officer, who I presume dictates what we do, is coming up with different figures. Are they different figures? I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
Jim, and we don't know the answer to that, but I don't think it's. Say to us, we're satisfied on this basis, but there isn't a mitigation, so we're recommending a reason for refusal for that in our report, I believe.
Thank you. I'm just looking at the reasons for the recommendation and there isn't one there that concerns this issue. Is that correct?
Jim, and reason for refusal free, that matter, it talks about failing to make the appropriate mitigation for increased nitrates and phosphates in the Solent SPA.
Anyway, the answer is councillor Pearson, it's very technical and you will be.
Yeah, well, I presume it was important, Chair, because it's actually been quoted by the case officer. I mean, I know it wasn't you, Sean, but I presume that case officer aware of that ledge from the chief planning officer. I presume she of rules or looks at what we do. I don't know what the relationship between chief planning officer of the country and ourselves is.
Jim, and the chief planning officer, as you say, gives national advice. What is said is Natural England are the statutory body in this respect, and we follow their guidance in terms of how we've interpreted their nutrient budget and how we consult with them. And then it's up to us as the local planning authority to undertake our appropriate assessment. As I say, at this stage, we are recommending that as a reason for refusal. It's a technical matter, as you say, in terms of the calculations, but it's also a technical matter in terms of the reason for refusal. If there was a mitigation, a strategy put forward that could be dealt with by section one oh six legal agreement, that would be, we would be able to deal with that matter, but at the moment it does form one of the reasons for refusal.
Thank you. And then any question, any further questions? So that would include the recommendations. councillor Cook?
Chair, I wish to apologize, and if it's not permissive to go back, it's still on page twenty-five, and I have read this report backwards and forwards, inside out, and I have missed something. And there are certain people in this room today that know I am a massive fan of trees, and it concerns me that, and it says here in the report, a number of trees on the site have already been removed previous to this application being assessed. And please do stop me, Chair, at any stage if you feel I'm going too far. What gives people the right to take down trees without permission? It even quotes here, the tree officer had concerns in relation to the impact on trees, and then the application has not even been supported with an arboricultural impact assessment. So I'm very concerned about the tree situation. What gives people the right to do that? Thank you, Chair.
I shared your concern when I heard that statement, that trees have been removed. I presume, but I don't know, that it's because they didn't have a TPO on them. Someone going to offer?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's essentially the point, if they're not protected, people can do what they like with their trees on their land, unfortunately, perhaps. As the officer, as the report says, that has happened before the consideration of this application, so.
If there are no further questions, then we will move to debate. councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. I was going to wait and hear what other members were saying, but there were some questions that I feel as the local member I can actually give some clarification about, so I'm happy to do that. I'm very happy to support the officer recommendation in this case. This is a proposed development in the countryside. It is in the strategic gap. It is very visible from and right next door to the footpath around Barton Meadows, described in The Times as one of the best, ten best places in the UK to see a wildflower meadow. And the existing houses, which the developers made much of next door, actually were all built in the fifties, possibly the sixties. And the only one that, that looks particularly new is Carl End, which is a replace, which was effectively a replacement house. An application to build another house in that garden was refused on these exact policy grounds. And from my point of view, the King's Barton development, which is just on the other side of the railway line, makes it even more important that we protect this strategic gap in the countryside. It's not on the roadside. There's a very steep bank up from Wellhouse Lane, now almost devoid of trees, which used to be heavily treed. All the gardens there, both those two gardens where the old bungalows are being replaced, used to be full of vegetation, shrubs, trees, everything, and they've both been completely ripped out completely, which is very shocking. But, you know, that's what people do, isn't it? But if we, if we, if we agreed this against our officer's recommendation, it would be completely against policy, and I really would urge members to, to support the officer recommendation, support the strategic gap, go against development in the countryside. The house, the original house has already been replaced with a very much bigger one. If you saw the picture of the old bungalow next to the new Alpine E Lodge, which has been built there, that's what used to be there. There used to be two old little bungalows, so there we go. So that's my view. I support the.
Thank you, councillor Rutter. Any further debate? councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chair. I was informed by comments from. And bear those in mind, but I would like just to tease out some of the issues around settlement, because I do at the moment find it hard to accept comments that councillor. Made, I think there's a different way of interpreting it. The plot is clearly within the settlement gap, eighteen, as indicated. So are second and third houses at the ends of the deep plot. Various times, and these houses seem to me to constitute an area of now established residential development, which the application site, currently vacant, appears a bit of an anomaly. MTRA three permits infill of a small site with a. Frontage, but none of these extra houses, or indeed the applicant house, would front onto School Lane. However, they do establish what I would call a visual settlement boundary along the permissive footpath, which runs behind them. So in terms of perceptions of landscape and gap, I would suggest, although I'm sure that a road is not the same as a footpath in planning law, but from perceptions, that path is where. Function of the road, conceptual function of the road, and it has a gap in it. This gap is like a missing tooth on that footpath. I've walked along School Lane frequently over several years under the path, and it always appeared to me to be a built part of Headborne Worthy. The fact that it is. And I understand, but I find personally, by my perceptions, hard to, hard to accept. The real-life settlement gap would appear to be the Barton Meadows nature reserve, of course, of outstanding value and beauty and serves the function of separating. Railway line. I don't think that key importance of. Be compromised at all by specifically allowing a. And also, finally, I would just want to say about the architectural merit, which is many, indeed most of the comments that have been received. Signing site of raising the standards of this area and farm. And I think this contemporary design is, is. With CP thirteen. So I understand that I'm probably barking up a tree with no apples in it, but I just thought I would like to clarify my thinking. Thank you for your.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. Any further contributions to debate? councillor Pearson?
Yes, so as my questions, I think, revealed, according to quandary between whether this is a brownfield site, it's a large site, or guarding the local gap. When one looks at the policies we have in the existing plan, we have effective use of land, green infrastructure, biodiversity. These are all in the existing plans. The emerging plan extends those policies and indeed reinforces them, strengthens the position of the local gap. And I guess I've got to declare, I'm one of those people who guards local gaps between the villages, from a militant point of view, also from an environmental point of view. It does nothing for green infrastructure of this area, there's nothing for biodiversity in this area, especially now with the, what was there has been virtually cleared away. Now, I don't know what is going to happen to, what the owner of that site is going to do as a result of that, if we, if we do turn this down, because instead of having a ten percent gain in biodiversity, there's something like a ten percent loss in biodiversity. And this is in the local gap. I agree with councillor Edwards in the sense that you look at this, it could almost be called a hamlet, but hamlets are not development areas, they don't have development boundaries. So therefore, the fact that it is effectively countryside, albeit with a hamlet, is even more important. So I'm going to support what the officer has said, simply for those policies that I've quoted, there's no gain for biodiversity, there's no gain for character. I agree, the design is interesting, but you match that against the environment, the environmental impact, I'm sorry, it goes down, it sinks like a, I would almost say like the Titanic, but perhaps that's cynical when I say that. So I support the officer.
councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chair. I find myself agreeing with what councillor, I did find this difficult to try and understand exactly where the gap was. But in saying that, if the application is refused, what would be the position with regard to the access road, which has already started to be? No top surface has been on it, obviously has been scraped through.
We are in debate, councillor Reed, but we will have an answer to that.
Sorry, Chair, I think we should cover that.
Yeah, okay, because that will influence your rating.
Well, this is speculation. The, the, I've been on site, so obviously I'm aware of the nature of the access road that sweeps from in front of the existing house behind. I assume that would just, and there is no surfacing, it simply is as a driveway. I assume that would just be incorporated into, into the existing new property.
Sorry, I wasn't really meant. To make sure it's covered somewhere in the conditions or reasons.
Any further contributions? I will give my opinion. You could look at the map and, on which we have on page seventeen, and think, oh, it's just a little strip of land, but it's an important strip of land because it is separating settlements, and councillor Pearson is quite correct. The emphasis in the new local plan, which has yet to go out to consultation, so it's at that stage, but the new local plan will stress the importance of local gaps because we're getting more and more housing all the time, and those are closing those gaps. Now, I find it difficult to understand how building a house in a gap doesn't diminish it, because as soon as you put built structure on a piece of countryside, which is what this is designated as, then you're diminishing that gap, you're diminishing it visually and physically. So I can't understand that. And our policy, MTRA three, covers that, is that you shouldn't diminish gaps with building in the gap. I think we're at a stage where it's very important to preserve our policies, if those policies are going to be changed as a result of the consultation or deliberations that are going on about the new local plan. And those are quite intense, I have to tell you. Several of us here took part in the scrutiny of the consultation, and we started work at half past nine and we finished at half past eight in the evening. So the officers as well are putting in enormous amount of effort into the local plan, but currently, this is what our policies are telling us, is that MTRA three, no building its countryside gap, especially if it's going to diminish, which I'm saying it does, and then it's designated countryside and should not be built on. The precedent might not be, and I agree, I can't see any access to the other properties, but the precedent, if we allow this, might be applicants quoting to us, well, you allowed building on this gap, so why don't you allow building on our gap? That's, in my view, where the precedent will come. So I quite strongly believe that the officer's recommendation is a correct one, and I will be supporting it. Have we got to the voting stage? So this application has been recommended for refusal for the reasons set out at the end of the report. councillor Reed, you were suggesting that the current access road that's been built should be dealt with there? Councillor Reed, you were suggesting that the current access road that's been built should be dealt with there? Officers?
I don't think we believe that we needed to add a reason for refusal on that. This application sits on its own merits in terms of the proposal seeking a new dwelling. And I think our reasons, we could adequately defend that in appeal.
Thank you. So that will be the reasons for refusal, pages 26 and 27. All those in favour of the refusal of this application, please show. And those against? Abstentions? So that application is refused. Thank you very much. So you're very welcome to stay, members of the public, but we'll allow a short gap while we change over offices and allow you to leave, should you wish to do so. Thank you. So we will now move on to agenda item seven. This is 21/03224/ful. And this is at Winchester Baptist Church, Swan Lane, Winchester. And it is the extension, there's further details in our report, I won't read them all out, but a proposed extension. The case officer today is Cat Watson. And when you're ready, Cat, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. The application is for internal and external alterations, including an extension to the Winchester Baptist Church. Here we can see the site marked with the red star. It's within the conservation area of Winchester and located on City Road. And we've got an aerial photograph of the site showing the same thing. Here we've got a photo of the front of the building. And then here we can see the extent of the conservation area, and that's in this orange, yellow colour. And we've got some listed buildings, so these are marked by these shops that are adjacent. We have the site plan, so we've got the main church building which fronts onto City Road. We've got other buildings which front onto Swan Lane and also to Hyde Street. And in the bubble, we've got the area of the extension, which is to replace an existing enclosed porch and will form a stairwell leading to upper floors within the buildings. Here we have an image of the front of the building. And here we've got the proposed extension. To the left, we've got the modern building, which is used as the job centre. Here we've got a close-up of the extension. So we've got the front of the extension here. And again, to the left, we can see the side of the job centre. Here we've got an existing, in the top left-hand corner, we've got the porch that's existing here, which has been built to match up with the architecture and appearance of the main building. And the bottom right-hand corner is what is proposed. So here we can see a sort of contemporary structure, metal with a large amount of glazing on that structure. And from a different view, so on the left-hand side, looking towards the building from the junction of Jury Street and City Road. And on the bottom, then we can see the new proposed extension. And then the proposed floor plan, so there's a number of internal works taking place to reorganise the space. And again, we can see on the left-hand side, this is ground floor. The right-hand side is first floor, and where this bubble is, it shows the area of the proposed extension. Another view of the front of the building. And of the side of the building, of the existing porch that's taken from City Road. Again, the proposed structure. That concludes the presentation, Chair. The recommendation is refusal. It's contrary to policy in that the design mass scale and external appearance of the extension would adversely affect the character of the conservation area and the existing building. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. And we have one public speaker, who's the Reverend Marcus Dickinson. Good morning. Reverend Dickinson, you might like to move your microphone slightly nearer you because the microphone does like the speaker to be near.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, that's fine, thank you. So you have three minutes, and the clock will start when you start speaking.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Our representation will concentrate on the single point of objection by your officers, that being the size and style of the proposed main entrance lobby on City Road. Before I comment on that, I feel it important to give some context, which I hope will start to explain why we hope the proposal will be granted permission. Our charitable organisation is a major provider of local services, not just to our members, but to the wider community. We are often the last or only port of call for vulnerable people in urgent need of our help. A poll has shown that passersby would not immediately know how to enter our church building. Our current entrance on City Road is not only hard to locate, it is too small to offer a practical welcome for those in wheelchairs or with children in pushchairs. Its solid walls hide the activities going on inside and give passersby the impression that the church building is either vacant or closed. People in need or who would benefit from knowing more about our community groups may well be put off seeking the help they need due to our less than welcoming entrance. A new entrance, as currently proposed, will provide us with a shop window to the church and to the different services we offer our local community. It will allow people to see into a new foyer, a light, open space where people can meet together. We would like a church frontage that is a warm, vibrant, open and welcoming view on one of the main arteries into the heart of our city, a city of sanctuary and hospitality. In addition to providing us with a welcoming and clearly visible main entrance, the current proposal provides an essential fire escape from the proposed first-floor offices, designed to enable our staff team to work more effectively together and be an active presence on our city centre frontage. In response to your officers' concerns over the entrance lobby's height and appearance, alternative designs for the office fire escape were explored. Unfortunately, a single-storey entrance lobby would require the office fire escape to be enclosed in a large and ugly boxing out within the main sanctuary. Of all the spaces across our site, we want to preserve the capacity and character of the sanctuary. Therefore, a single-storey entrance lobby would sadly make the proposed first-floor offices untenable. Our proposed contemporary design allows more glass and less solid structure than would a traditional approach. The slender structure and darker colours minimise the lobby's height and make it visually subservient to the existing building. We believe the current proposal is wholly in keeping with historic building advisory bodies and good practice guidance, who advise that contemporary but complementary additions are preferable to an imitation of the original building's style and features. Finally, we would note support given by the City of Winchester Trust, an organisation whose primary purpose is, in their own words, "to conserve the character of the city and its surroundings by protecting and enhancing the spaces, buildings and all its artefacts." The trusts say that they rarely offer their unconditional support to planning applications, so we would respectfully ask that their informed opinion and their support of our proposal be given due consideration. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you're able to find in favour of this application.
Thank you very much, Reverend. Any questions for Reverend? Councillor Rutter?
Thank you. Yes, I was very impressed with the comment from the City of Manchester Trust. Can you just tell me why it's sort of orange round it? What is that? Is that busted metal or is that wood or?
Our architect isn't able to be with us today, so as the minister of the church, I'd like to go into detail on that, but that's not my forte, I'm afraid.
You don't know? That might know, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's got, it's a metal frame, so it's the metal frame that supports the the large amount of glazing. I think, I wasn't the case officer on this one, but I think it does have that sort of burnished metal finish.
I was just wondering if it would look better if it was black or dark grey, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? No?
Just following on from councillor Rutter. Is that not something that could be controlled under a condition?
This won't be for the reverend, but can we control the colour, Cat, under conditions?
Yeah, we can have a condition requiring details and samples of aerials. And within that condition, we could agree those.
If approved, yeah, if recommended. I wonder if it's not going to look quite so orange as the vice chair thinks? Because if you say it's burnished, it's going to look not orange, but yeah, burnished.
Yes, Chair, I think with these metal frames, they do weather over time as well, so it probably wouldn't look quite as sort of bright as it does on the picture.
If this is permitted, we can control the look of the colour of the metal.
It's something that can be covered in that condition.
Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Chair. If I may add, I think the word might be bronze, bronze colour look. And if you, if I may, Chair, there are buildings across the road, literally, that have got some pieces very much like this proposed. Thank you, Chair.
We won't get caught up on the colour issue. Any more questions actually for the reverend here? So thank you very much for coming along today. And obviously, you're going to stay to see the rest of the conversation about the application. So we move then, councillors. Oh, did you want to, Cat, pick up anything that's been said by the reverend?
No, Chair, I think, I don't have anything further to say. Thank you, Chair.
We move then on to our report. And the first item on page 48 is principle of development. Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to double check. So in terms of the officer recommendation, the recommendation to refuse is simply on the look of the porch on the street frontage. All the other things that are in that planning application are fine with the officers. Is that right?
That's what I understand, yes. The various other alterations are not a problem. It's really to do with the impact of the proposed extension on the character and appearance of the conservation area and its incongruity with the surrounding character of that area.
Any further questions? So let's go to the impact on the character and appearance of the area and the conservation area. Councillor Reed?
I note that our lead officer for Historic Environment said "by virtue of design and also harm to a positive building within a conservation area". I've seen these all over the place, where you put glass extensions on. I'm not quite understanding where the harm is with regards to conservation area. When you look at the building next door to it, which was late 1960s, early 70s possibly, which is ghastly. I fail to see the understanding of the design as being a problem.
Do we have a conservation officer here today?
Yes, Chair, we've got Lucy Orchard-Lyle, if she could pop up and provide some clarification.
Would you like to come forward and use the microphones there? And you heard the question?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Can you hear me? Yeah, I think it is because the building is quite a positive building, traditionally detailed, and the design is quite dark. And it's, it's just, I think, I don't mind modern or contemporary, but I think it's, there seems to be quite a lot of emphasis on matching the building next door, which is not particularly brilliant architecture, and I think it should be good parts of the conservation area, not the, the less desirable.
Could I just ask, that in that area, there are all sorts of architectures. You know, there's modern buildings, buildings, new buildings that are made to look old. I too struggle to see how that doesn't fit into the street scene.
I think, I don't, as I said, I don't have a problem with contemporary, and I think contemporary would fit into the street scene, but I think it's quite just the height and the mass, because the building sits forward in the street scene, it's quite, it's going to be very prominent porch. And I think it's very much, so it's very sort of, how it's detailed is key. And I'm just concerned that, design-wise, it is quite harmful, quite incongruous.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Chair. You say that it sits forward. I look at the proposed and the existing photographs here. I appreciate the height is greater, but it looks to be, and I don't have the square plan here in front of me, that it's on the same footprint. Though I don't see that it would be any further, it's not any further out. You're referring to the height of it. There is a purpose to the height, isn't there?
No, what I mean is, is the whole building, the whole Baptist church, is forward compared to the buildings next door to it. And so it's, and so when you're looking up the street scene, it's more visible.
Thank you.
Councillor Reed?
Would you admit then that it actually sits on exactly the same footprint? What's already there? I think that was councillor Cook's.
So sorry, I was just asking the really pinnacle question. Did you want me to say something here? Both looking at me. Okay, fine. Okay, fine. Any, any other questions? So, thank you, Lucy Orchard-Lyle, isn't it? Sorry to throw you in the deep end. Probably your first meeting here, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, but thank you very much for your contribution. So we move on then to next section, a long one, and then we, I presume that we've all included the heritage asset. So any other questions? You note that it's point four-six kilometers from the national park, but won't affect it. So any other questions on the conditions? councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. I wonder if the officers could just explain, the conclusion almost indicates that, that the recommendation should be to approve, because it says overall, for the reasons set out above, it is considered that the proposed lobby would result in less than substantial harm to the character and appearance of the area and the conservation area by virtue of design. But then it goes on to say it would harm, and also harm to a positive building within the conservation area. I just wondered if I could just double, just explain how saying that it's less than substantial, so whilst they're accepting it's less than substantial, they're still considering that there is harm. Is that, is that correct?
Chair, I think, I think Lucy would probably be able to provide a more detailed explanation of what is less than substantial harm and how that's weighed balance.
Fiona, and then I'll come back to you, Lucy.
Chair, I will try and explain it in terminology that perhaps we can all understand, and then if Lucy needs to correct me or to put it into more appropriate language, then perhaps she can help. But basically, any harm at all to a heritage asset or the conservation area needs given very significant weight in your decision-making. In short, the greater the harm, the more likely that the application would be, that's probably fairly obvious really. However, there are some cases, and this may or may not be one of them, where there is limited harm, and that terminology is less than substantial, that's what's used. So it may be, but in some cases, the level of harm is outweighed by other benefits, and that's what the decision-maker has to take into account. In this particular application, the case officer has considered that the level of harm is less than substantial, and, and harm has been identified. And this case officer has also concluded that the extension, the benefits of the extension would not be outweighed by the harm, and that during your decision-making process, identify whether or not there is any harm. And if there is harm, then if that harm is limited, it may be that that would be by other benefits, but you have to be quite clear in your decision to see whether there's any harm and whether it's outweighed by benefits. I think Lucy may or may not have anything to add to that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, that's useful. Lucy, would you like to add anything there?
I don't think so. I think, yes, there's two types of harm. You've either got, there's no harm or there's harm, and then you've got to split the harm into two, whether it's less than substantial or substantial. And substantial has to be really, really, like demolition of half a building, sort of, you know. So less than, so even less than substantial can actually still be quite significant harm, it's on a sliding scale. So it can be at the lower end or it can be...
Thank you both, that makes it clear for us, as in, in our decision-making. councillor Edwards?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just reflecting on, on what we've heard, it seems to me that we have a building here which is very, very strong in its form, looking at the symmetry of the facade. It's not a question of detailing, it's a question of the integrity of the design, which I feel is significantly compromised by the extension. I'm, I'm very torn, because I absolutely understand the motives for wishing to increase the building, but I absolutely, I may not be expressing her thinking, but I absolutely accept the recognition of our...
So councillor Edwards, I hadn't declared debate, but was that your contribution to debate? Or would you like to? I'm going to declare debate now, so would you like to add anything else in debate?
I think I've had my debate. Thank you, Chair. Sorry.
So debate. Any contributions? councillor Pearson?
Yeah, I pass this building regularly, when I travel again on the Park and Ride bus. Yes, it's a prominent building, but it's, when you look at the buildings that you see along that side of city road, from the Co-op, past the funeral parlor to the Job Centre, and then you have this beautiful building which is the Baptist Church. Now, look opposite, I can understand why councillor Cook wants to be bronze, because opposite actually is a bronzing parlor. I'm sure she didn't actually mean that for that reason. But I look at this and I also think similar ideas we've looked at in the past. I can remember one vividly, which is a thatched cottage. It puts a glass extension on. I've got to say, my first reaction was, eh, God, fits. Ironically, historic England actually supported it, as did the architects supported it, because it, because it's twenty-first contemporary design, it went with the listed thatched building. And I look at this, yes, it's conservation area, but let's face it, most of the buildings around there, I've got to struggle to see actually why they're listed in the, in the conservation area, other than the fact that's the way the map has been drawn. Look at this, it is contemporary, it's the twenty-first. The word exactly the same say exactly the same pain, which is unusual for me, that the Winchester City Trust has said. I sometimes find that they, well, I think they're on a different planet, but in this case, I actually do agree with them. You could change this colour, that makes it stand out like a carbuncle. Why on earth have the architects chosen orange instead of sky blue, which goes with the actual building? I can't understand. If we could condition that, which I think the city trust says, would join the painted rend of the existing building should be submitted or conditioned, then I see no objection to this, because it is glass, and it is on the same footprint. Yes, it is tall, but... "that there be light" building, a vaguely familiar statement of that. Perhaps I'm using it incorrectly, but it is light, it is airy, it is twenty-first century. It is something, to me, that merges well with that building. The whole building sticks out, it's on the same footprint. I'm sorry, Catherine, Fiona, is it, I just can't agree with you, because I think it still fits into the conservation area, it's twenty-first century. Does that mean we're not going to have any twenty-first development in the conservation area? Because central Winchester's is going to have problems.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. In her defence, I have to say that, because she can't say it, that Catherine wasn't the case officer, but the case officer doesn't, is not available today, because we've had so many changes of days at this meeting. So not her recommendation as such, she is representing the city council. councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I've been very torn by this application, and I'm tending to go along with councillor Pearson. I do have a lot of respect for the City of Winchester Trust views, and I don't think that they ever accept something that was actually going to harm in any material way, the conservation area. If you look at page fifty-eight, the sort of face-on view, actually, particularly if we can condition the colour of the metal finish of the extension, I do think it's just going to disappear into the street scene. And what will you see? You'll see will actually be the original symmetrical Baptist church, without its little bit stuck on the end, which is the existing covered porch, which I always thought was a bit incongruous anyway, and looked like the entrance to an undertaker. I think it would be so much better, actually. I do think, actually, I don't think it'll harm the street scene, I don't think it'll harm the conservation area. I'm tending to think that it will actually improve things, certainly improve things for the Baptist church, and I'm very, very conscious of the contribution that they do make to the community. Not that that is in any way a planning kind of material consideration, but it's, we're inhuman. So that is my view, that it is actually acceptable, given that all the buildings are cheek-by-jowl along city road, and that it's going to be next door to something modern, whatever happens. It might as well be next to its own front porch extension that's modern. Though I don't think that the harm is enough to warrant refusal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Leaming, and then councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking at page sixty-three, which is the picture as it stands. I've always felt that the entrance to the church unbalances the building. I also look at the buildings either side, and think that they're not really fitting into the street scene either. I think that the addition of this part, if it was colour-matched, fit in a lot better, taking into account what the English Heritage, sorry, what the city trust have said, and I agree with them, so...
councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm also looking at page sixty-four, sixty-five, but if I look at it in colour, it's actually better, as against on our screens, which is sea boy for some reason. The existing structure that is in its place does off-balance the building as it appears at the moment. This proposed new glass frontage entrance hall, actually, when you look at it, try not to look at the colour, it blends in. You can see through the glass at an angle, so when you're walking past, you can actually see what the employment agency is and the Job Centre next door to it. That, I think, may be an asset, and it actually enhances, I believe, and I'm only just one person, I believe that it actually enhances the church structure. The little carbuncle that's there already doesn't do it any justice at all, so I agree with fellow members on that. And I think if you want examples, there are many, many examples throughout the whole of Europe on old buildings and new modern structures, and the one that always comes to mind, and you've heard it before, is the Kaiser Wilhelm Memorial Church in Berlin, where they have got a glass church next to the original church, and it doesn't spoil it, it enhances it, in fact. I think this is quite modest, in a sense. It brings into use, or easier into use and safety reasons, the upstairs story. With regards to the actual colour, I would like personally to see it as a neutral colour, a black, and the black would actually then pick up the wording that is on the front of the building, which is the church. And it would be less intrusive to have black, which is neutral, than any other sort of colour, in my view, and that is purely my view. I, Chairman, am not going to agree with the recommendation. I would actually support this particular application, because I think it's going to be a vast improvement to that scene, and as I've already said, with that early nineteen-seventies, late sixties building alongside it, it is some need to enhance area.
Thank you. councillor Clea?
Thank you very much, Chair. This building does indeed make a positive contribution to the conservation area and is a very imposing Victorian building. However, this application has several, several good elements to it. You take the improved entrance area, improved disabled access, and a much more, I feel, welcoming approach into the building, and I think it would encourage more church facilities. I know we're looking at it, the main reason, because the porch is the issue, but I really don't feel that it would cause harm. I think it, as councillor Reed said, it would enhance it, but perhaps the colour could be looked at. So I, sorry, I cannot support the officer recommendation for refusal. I think we will, it will look fine. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor West, what did you want to speak?
Thank you, Chair. I'm in agreement with many of my fellow councillors in what they've just said, so I'll cover a little bit of old ground here, but I think it's difficult times at the moment, and the support to the community, the institutions such as the Baptist church actually provide is so important. I walk past the building regularly because I live very close by, I always wonder why it's closed, and it would be fantastic to walk past a building that is inviting and actually will enhance, I think, the social community around there. I know it's not a planning reason, Chair, but I think it's important that we support institutions like this. I see the change there as beneficial. Many old buildings have more modern structures associated with them. I've worked in London for many, many years, and you'll find many up there that have done the same. So in this instance, I don't believe I can support the officer's recommendation, support the application going forward.
Thank you. councillor Cook?
I welcome this proposed extension, thank you. And I will not be in agreement with the officer, and I think to use the words that councillor Pearson said, "let there be light", I know there will be light, and I want to thank the reverend for his day as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to have my say as well, as everybody else has. And it is the city council's duty to look after listed buildings and preserve the conservation area, which is, I think, where the recommendation has come from, but you won't be surprised to know that I'm of a similar view to the rest of my colleagues. We always have this debate about churches, and we've had that several times with churches down here, and should they be allowed to put a porch in or a door in and through a wall? But churches are sort of living, modern buildings, and should be allowed to adapt, and I really feel that this will bring benefits to the church and the community. councillor Clea listed all the benefits that I've written down, but plus, we then solved the problem of the fire escape to the first floor, instead of having an ugly, visible thing, and we're going to incorporate this in the, in the building. It is the most beautiful building, but I don't feel that we're doing any harm. I think all of us are not happy with the colour, so we will leave that to the experts to sort out. And the fact that the Winchester Trust is supporting it, and the Winchester Trust do an awful lot for buildings in Winchester, they always copy councillor Rutter and myself in with their comments, so we know how they're thinking. But I really feel that this now, having a glazed porch, shows the purpose of the building, and as someone else has said, it's encouraging and welcoming. So it's a no-brainer, I'm afraid, for me. So we have to go through the procedure. This, this application has been recommended for refusal. All those in favour? All those in favour? Thank you. And those against?
Thank you, Chairman.
So that application, do we then have to vote on? Someone guide me here?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think, yeah, that's, that's very clear. You voted against the officer recommendation. Before you move on perhaps to give your material planning reasons, you've done that and then you'll obviously approve. I think from what I heard, Chair, if I could help summarise for you, that I think, from what I heard from different people in terms of your summary, perhaps I think you're saying that there's some limited harm. I know you're not all saying that, but you know, it's limited harm, but the benefits outweigh that harm. And therefore, in your view, that planning permission should be granted. And I think that would then align with the planning policies. You're minded to take that recommendation that you vote forward. I've asked Lorna to just, just drafted a few conditions, suggested conditions. And I just would like her to summarise those, Chair, before you then move on to vote.
Thank you, Chair. I've just looked at the file again and from what I've heard as well. The first, one of the first questions could be that rather than trying to specify a sort of a new condition for the eaves, that we say the brown slash bronze metal finish eaves material as shown on plan drawing number, so it's very precise, is hereby not approved. Details and samples of these shall be submitted to and approved by the local planning authority prior to commencement or development. Development shall be carried out as well, so we can talk about that. And I'm going to list another, other conditions which would follow that same pattern of wording as well, which would be fairly standard and specific to this type of planning application. The time condition, the approved drawings, details. Importantly, we'd want a full material schedule and detailed elevations also, one to 20 scale, and possibly a panel boarding for the elements that might come out of that, of, of the materials. And sort of specifically looking at the joints of the building, the roof eaves, any columns, fenestration, windows, set back doors, other openings. They've got a lot of detail in there. And also having some survey of the historic fabric and a sort of construction plan for the removal of the part of the building that is currently heritage, a heritage asset. So we'd also want a construction management plan, a traffic management plan. So we can make sure there's minimal disruption, given that it's on quite a busy junction. And an ecology survey and construction environmental plan as well and any mitigation because we are removing and demolishing part of the building as well. So I don't think we've got details of that in the application. And levels details as well. There's a sloping area, so we'd want to make sure that it was implemented correctly. And lastly, we probably want to have something about utilities to make sure that the new extension fits in. And again, looking at the impact of that with the historic fabric of it. So that's the recommended schedule.
Yes, I just, I agree with all that. And I was just thinking that Swan Lane at the back is really narrow, isn't it? That's going to have to be quite tightly controlled, how they move materials and take things away. But that will be covered in the, yeah. So are we happy?
Yeah, oh, sorry. I just wanted to say one more thing, Chair. And obviously, we would like you to just articulate that you think perhaps some limited harm, but the benefit outweighs that. I certainly heard that in debate. I just want to pick up on the colour because I want, you know, some of you have talked about it being black. Some have talked about, you know, whether, as Cat said, it would sort of be a bronze, you know, rusty sort of brown, orangey colour that would perhaps weather over time. I just wonder, I would like just to ask the committee to delegate that to your officers as we can agree that detail. Because in some ways I can understand black because I think, you know, that can be recessive. But I think it would need to be, I mean, we don't know the nature of how these metals, these metal frames may be able to be coloured. I'm sure they can be. But whether a lighter colour might be more suitable, I'm just not sure yet. And I wonder if that would be something you would delegate to your officers to agree, as Lorna had said, in the suggested conditions. But I just wanted you to sort of make sure, you know, I don't want you to drive by and a walk past in it, you know, and say, well, we wanted it black. And actually, you know, clearly you're delegating that to us to make that, that decision, Chair. Thank you.
Lots of nods all around here.
I recall in the past, Chair, that we used to look at a, didn't we, in the past, when we were looking at formars, look at colour palette? I'm sure there'll be something on there, which actually was on metal. I'm sure there's something in there that Julie could find.
Yeah, my view, which I'm looking to the committee to see if they agree with, is that we're not the experts and we leave it to the experts to see which will fit into the conservation area. Colours in our officer pack sometimes don't come out true, you know. So I don't think, you know, they're meant to be orange or, and you've had a few suggestions, but I'm sure the conservation officer will look at that and the case officer will look at that and see what fits in best. Does that get the support of the committee? Yeah, yeah. We don't want to prescribe a colour, I don't think.
Chairman, most metal these days tend to be powder coated rather than a straight pint.
And also, it's a heavy, heavily trafficked area. So we want to choose something that, you know, will survive the test of all the petrol fumes and whatever. But anyway, the experts will know all those things. So do I now have to take a vote on that? Yes. So this application has now been recommended for approval under the terms which you've heard from, mostly expressed from Lorna and Julie. Those in favour, please show. Those again. And abstained?
One.
That application has been approved. Very much, everybody, for coming along today. And we are now going to take a break until 20 past 11.
I think we're now all assembled, so we move on to agenda item eight, which is twenty-two dash oh one two three six dash H O U. Erection of a pagoda to the rear of the property at Gifford House, St Giles Hill in Winchester. The case officer is Jordan Wiseman, and when you're ready, Jordan, please give us your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Before I start on the presentation, there's just one update I wanted to give further to what is on the update sheet, and that's to do with the neighbourhood design statement for St Giles Hill. Just to confirm that policy ten of that design statement does also apply, particularly where it mentions the issue of new buildings or building works should not dominate neighbouring buildings, and also where it mentions that new buildings on steep gradients should be set into the slope. Now I'll begin the presentation. So on the first page here, you can see the application site hatched out here. Point of clarification on how the site is accessed, particularly from Altered Road. There is a point of access down here where my cursor is, which leads up to St Giles Hill, but there is also a vehicular access to the rear of the site. The next slide here is just another site location and block plan. Hatched out on the plan on the right-hand side is the area for the proposed structure. On the next slide, we have the existing site plan, which shows the main dwelling and various other garden structures. The area for the proposed structure is here where my cursor is showing. And on the next slide here, same site plan but with the area for the proposed structure marked out. This is the existing and proposed west rear elevation. So on the left-hand side is the existing rear elevation, and on the right-hand side is the proposed rear elevation with the structure out here. This is the existing proposed north side elevation, existing on the left-hand side and proposed on the right-hand side. Proposed structure marked here. And this is the existing proposed south elevations, shows the view from the other side. Site existing on the left-hand side, proposed on the right-hand side with the structure marked out here. This next slide shows the existing and proposed sections. Moving on to site photographs, this is a photograph of the site looking northwest from the front of the application site. Next photo is a view of the application site looking north. This shows the existing patio area where the proposed pagoda is to be situated. This is a view of the application site looking east. Again, this shows the patio area where the proposed structure is to cover. Another photo looking east, stood further away from the proposed site for the for the structure. A photograph here is looking west across the application site. This is taken stood on the patio area where the proposed structure would be located. This is another photo, just a bit closer up, looking north, which is looking towards the nearest neighbour beyond this boundary. And on this next slide are a couple of other photos, again, looking over the northern boundary, which help to sort of show the difference in levels between the application site and the existing patio area and the neighbouring property beyond this boundary. Also demonstrates that as the existing situation, there is an element of overlooking present. This is another photograph here looking southwest. This is taken from outside the the application site and the neighbouring property nearest to the development. This shows the difference in levels again between the two sites. Application site being here and the nearest neighbouring property, Sycamore House, just here. Concludes the presentation, and the recommendation for this application is to permit. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So we now move to the public speakers. And I have the list in front of me now. I believe that Miss Cookshank is not able to be here. And you're Mr Roland Rouse. And Ian, good morning. So I think the aim was for you to read, Mr Roland Rouse, what Miss Cookshank was going to say. But the three of you have to share the three minutes, so you work that out, have you? Yeah, good. So who's going to start?
Yes, I will be making the presentation. Mr Tate will be here to advise.
And you're not saying anything but answering questions, if there are any. Yeah, okay, good. All right. So did you hear that? We're just getting your presentation up. Haven't quite done it yet. So for recording purposes, we are just getting the presentation up from the objectors, up on the screen. And we're all ready. So, Mr Roland Rouse, when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to address this planning committee today. I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of St Giles Hill, representing most of the seven properties surrounding Gifford House. I personally live downhill, I'm the immediate neighbour of Gifford House. I'd like to address two things in particular. Firstly, the importance of St Giles Hill from an historic and environmental point of view, and secondly, the reason for objection to the proposed pagoda. St Giles Hill is in a conservation area of huge historical interest. Having been occupied by Romans, Saxons, and later home to one of the most important medieval fairs in Europe, my family have found numerous historical objects in our garden, which include a Roman coin, a medieval jeton, and a Charles the First farthing. I have lived in our house for over twenty years and treasure this wonderful nature-rich, unique location. A wildlife haven with hedgehogs, foxes, an abundance of insects, bees and birds, which is an area I'm desperate to protect. Can I have the view from this one, please? Thank you. Let me now specifically address the planning application. We have suffered two years of substantial building work at Gifford House. Where a swimming pool and out-of-proportion pool house with a sauna and jacuzzi were constructed with no warning, all approved under permitted development P D, altering the landscape for all residents and visitors to St Giles Hill. It is also worrying that P D allows one to forego any archaeological investigation. It is now too late to discover what was beneath the ground. Gifford House itself sits on a steep slope, and I wonder if the planning officer was able to actually go to the Brin and Sycamore House, the two properties directly below Gifford House, to see the full impact of what has been permitted under permitted development. Now please try and visualise an additional structure, two point six metres high, sitting on top of the five metre brick wall. You can see behind the wooden fence there. These houses have suffered considerably. They are already confronted by a high brick wall running along their entire garden, as well as an overbearing pool house impacting their light. This contravenes the guidance in policy ten of the St Giles Hill neighbourhood design statement endorsed by Winchester City Council. Quote, quote, "Buildings should not dominate neighbouring buildings, and new buildings on steep gradients should be set sympathetically into the slope." This has not been the case. I would like us members to think very carefully about approving this application for a pagoda, bearing in mind the height of the terrace that has already been raised considerably without factoring in the steep gradient. All approved without warning under P D rights. At what point-
Mr Roland Rouse, your time is up. Would you like to read us your last sentence?
I've just got one sentence, yes. That's okay. Thank you. At what point does this development at Gifford House end? Our concern is this sets a precedent for failing to protect the historical nature-rich conservation area. I beg of this committee to see the bigger picture here.
Thank you very much. Councillors, any further questions for either Mr Tate or Mr Roland Rouse? councillor Edwards?
Matter of clarification, distance. Windows of the-
We have that. So looking at the photograph there, you can see the screen on the edge of the patio. As the case officer mentioned on his photographs, the pagoda will be immediately behind that wooden screen, and obviously projected above it. That photograph, by the way, is taken from the upstairs window of my house. It's level with the top of the wooden fence. So you can see how high that wall and pool house at the bottom is already above in my garden, and now another two point six metres is going to be built on top of that. And that is south facing, so that's the sun coming from that direction. Well, I didn't actually get the dimensions until the report was submitted for this committee meeting. I believe it's two point six metres high, four point six metres wide, extends out four point six metres, and I'm not sure how deep the pagoda is planned to be.
Sorry, I'm perhaps on the phone, and a question that I'm not making sufficiently clearly.
We will pick that up at the end of the public speaking.
I think in answer to councillor Edwards, it's about fifteen metres from the bedroom window to where the structure will be-
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any further questions? No. So thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming along today. Thank you. And so we have the ward councillor, councillor Charles Radcliffe. Good morning. Your time will come up on the screen, and you have five minutes when you're ready.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everyone. I'd also like to say thank you to Ms Pinnock for her advice on this case when she came to speak with affected local residents recently, and we appreciated her time. As one of the ward councillors for St Michael, I've been approached by members of the St Giles Hill community opposed to further development at Gifford House. Now, I'm aware that on the face of it, this application is for what might seem like a reasonably modest pagoda abutting the back of Clifford House. Were it that simple, I doubt we would have seen the level of dismay and opposition amongst neighbouring residents that we have seen. As we've heard, the real problem here is that the proposal to erect a pagoda comes on top of two years of heavy construction at this site, all carried out without planning permission, quite legitimately relying on permitted development rights. As part of these works, a swimming pool has been built, surrounded by a terrace, bordered at the far end by an extensive pool house. And because of the steep slope of the land, the pool has required a five-metre-high brick sidewall to be constructed along the northern boundary of the site. And at the back of the plot, the new pool house, the front elevation of which complies precisely with the two-and-a-half-metre height limit permitted under P D, is again, due to the slope, more than eight metres high at the rear, all of which, officers will be sure of us, is lawful under P D, which seems to assume that all plots will be level. I accept that the works already carried out here lie outside the scope of the present application. There's no criticism here of the owners of Gifford House, who by all accounts have proceeded by the book. That being so, perhaps we should be asking ourselves whether there's a problem with the book. PD allows homeowners and developers to build out their gardens without subjecting their plans to local scrutiny. No opportunity for neighbours to object, no need to take into account any archaeology on the site, no need to assess or mitigate environmental impact, no need to take into account the requirements of the local neighbourhood design statement, in fact, no need to take into account any of the planning policies with which this committee normally concerns itself. That is, of course, national policy. But we can and we have elsewhere taken action to suspend PD rights where their operation is causing harm. And I would suggest that in St Giles Hill, or at least this specific part of the hill, we run the risk of harm if we allow PD rights to remain unrestricted. Highly unusual topography of the area with its very steep slopes means standard PD rules about building and structural heights are not suitable. I also think the area's history and its rich archaeological heritage warrant greater protection than the current PD regime provides. None of us want to see the green slopes of St Giles Hill turned into concrete terraces. None of us want to see potentially rare archaeology smashed without record or local flora and fauna driven out. But to save St Giles, we need to better regulate development there. It's not within the powers of this committee, I understand, to suspend PD rights. But I hope you'll consider taking the matter up with officers, with the portfolio holder and ultimately with Cabinet to seek a resolution of this challenge. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Radcliffe. Don't go because there might be some questions for you. Are there any questions for councillor Radcliffe? No, so you may go. Sorry about that. Jordan, anything you wish to pick up from... Oh, right, yep, sorry, coming at me from both sides. Right, so sorry, we have one supporter who is Toby Windsor. Good morning, sorry to nearly lift you out. Mr Windsor, you have three minutes. The time will come up on the screen when you start speaking. If you could move your microphone, it's not near you, as near as you can.
Thank you, Chair, can you hear me?
Yeah. So, yeah, when you're ready.
Good morning, Chair, and members of the committee. I stand here this morning to speak in support of this minor householder application for a solar shade to the applicant's west-facing garden room. The applicant is seeking to install a temporary, yet sustainable sunshade as their west-facing garden room overheats in the summer months. The temporary structure should also offer shelter from the midday sun for their outdoor seating immediately adjacent to the back of the house. The sunshade has been designed to elegantly stand alone with four anchor points merely bolted to the existing paving. The slender metal frame and louvers can then be erected and disassembled at will. The dimensions of the temporary structure are 4.6 metres wide, 4.85 metres deep and only 2.45 metres high. The thin-profiled structure sits on the existing patio, which itself is set 3.5 metres from the adjacent boundary. The structure is then set in by a further 1.5 metres from the edge of the patio. As such, and as commonly used guide, the proposed shade sits well within the 45-degree line from the back of the neighbouring property, thus limiting any impact on the sunlight to the neighbouring property. Objections were received on the basis of this slender temporary frame blocking winter sun. However, given the aforementioned dimensions and also the relative aspect of the host dwelling and the neighbouring property, there would be no overshadowing beyond that caused by the existing surrounding trees and properties. This modest structure is of a simple contemporary design, utilising lightweight, thin-profiled metal extrusions to provide a slender frame that ties in well with the more modern aesthetic of the pre-existing extension. This offers a discreet, yet complimentary backdrop to the property and the recently rejuvenated flora and fauna. It is not substantial nor visible enough to cause any harm to be contrary to the local character, which in many instances is complemented by modern extensions in juxtaposition to the prevailing Georgian architecture. Given the above, it is considered that this modest, open, lightweight structure would be policy compliant, as previously outlined by the case officer, and would not cause harm to either the neighbouring properties or the character of the local area. We ask that members heed the recommendation of their learned officer and grant in favour of this minor application.
Thank you very much, thank you. Councillors, any further questions? Councillor Reed, followed by councillor Cook?
Looking at the pizza oven as a wooden fencing, padded fencing, is that going to remain? Is the intention to remove?
That wooden trellis was pre-existing and has been replaced with a new wooden trellis, but of exactly the same. That will remain. That sits on the wall that previously has been discussed and will remain correct.
Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Chair. That was actually one of my questions, but I had a second one if that was all right. And you used the word temporary. Are you saying, forgive me here, it wouldn't be up 365 days of the year? Is that what you're saying? Have I misunderstood what you said there? Because I didn't hear the word, I heard contemporary, but I heard temporary as well at one stage.
You heard both words, and both words were intended. It is not a permanent structure by nature that is not permanently fixed to the ground. It is bolted to the ground. There was objections with reason to further construction works. That's not the case. It would be screwed to the ground, not needing significant foundations.
So, Chair, it would still be there 365 days a year? That's what I needed to hear. Thank you, thank you.
It would be at the applicant's discretion whether they erected it or put it down. So it's not to say that it would be there 365 days a year.
Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. Can I just check? So the main structure is this thin metal frame. But there is a sunshade which is extended over the top, is that right? And that presumably would be put out only when it was sunny and then put away again. Is that correct?
There are adjustable louvers or blades within the profile of the frame that sit across the top, so they can either be open or closed.
So it's like a louver roof, that frame?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Further questions? No. So thank you very much for coming along and you may go back to your seat. Thank you very much, Mr Windsor. Jordan, anything you'd like to add after the public speaking?
Nothing to add from me.
Question to be sorted out?
We can answer that. That correlated with your word.
And do we, because we've having several questions about it, do we have actual picture of what it's going to look like? See one in our papers? We'll leave Pinnock to find us a picture if she can. So we'll go on to the report, councillors. So the first item, principle of development on page 7071.
Chair, is it possible just to have a clarification when the photographs are actually taken? Looking at the shadowing elements?
Can you remember?
From memory, I think this was about sort of 10, half ten in the morning. That is my best memory.
Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. I think my question might be for Mrs Pinnock. But is this area of St Giles Hill a conservation area? And if so, how does that impact on permitted development rights?
Chair, it would probably be safer if I asked Jordan to answer those questions.
Well, permitted development rights do apply in conservation areas. In some instances, for some of the rights, they are more restrictive. If something is in a conservation area, what they have done, to my knowledge, they aren't particularly more restricted if they are in a conservation area for things like pool houses. Conservation areas.
How are we doing with finding what was...
A listing and proposed plan up in front of you now. So this is a... Element to the rear. See, I've been on site, this site myself, so I would say they were bifold doors, Chair. And that's the patio, isn't it, that they exit out here? And it is, you see the structure here, it's a flat roof structure acknowledging the agent saying that the top that can be rotated depending on the position of the sun. But it is that sort of structure here in foreground, that story element to the rear. And we take you through, you see that in different angles. So in this one, you can see this structure. Ex, hanging out from that... Profile here on the left, the rear.
So in height, it doesn't stick out? I am finding it difficult to, I didn't understand the photograph before. I am finding it difficult.
So the proposed structure doesn't stick out above that existing part of the dwelling. It extends out from the rear of the main house.
I see, yeah.
The elevations that you're seeing here, the drawings in front of you, it's, you know, it is quite a lightweight structure. It's sort of horse-type posts with a roof. Louvers in the top. There's not really a lot to it, so the plans don't show a great deal. It's just almost an outline of a structure.
Is this a retrospective application?
No.
Not?
No, it's not, Chair, no.
And was pre-application advice taken?
No, not in this instance, no.
No, you can see that, yeah. Okay. So any more questions of, yeah, councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chair. I imagine that there is nothing to stop a person applying for planning permission, something which would be permitted under permitted development, should they choose to do so. But my question is, is there anything specific? I don't know that it's a legitimate question.
I'll see where we go.
Is there anything specific to this proposal which would prevent it being developed? Given all that has already happened on the site?
So this proposal is for a structure that is within two metres of the property's boundary and it's over two metres in height, which is why it triggered the need for a planning application and why it cannot be completed under permitted development rights.
Thank you, I should have remembered that.
Councillor Leaming?
Thank you, Chair. Has the patio actually been built up under the permitted development rights? We have not got any details of how the land slopes down towards the other house.
The patio is there and it's my understanding that that was constructed under permitted development rights. As I say, the patio is pre-existing, so it's not formed part of my assessment for this application. The proposed structure is to sit on top of the patio. The gradient between the two properties, not built up, is quite significant, steep. Changing levels, as you may have seen in the photos in the presentation. Does that help answer your question?
Well, I'm a little bit concerned that you've got it built along the... Well, I'm wondering whether that affected the height overlooking the neighbour's garden.
Neither of those issues, I don't believe, are subject to this application. Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, that's what I was going to say. The works that have been carried out, carried out under permitted development, the applicant did apply for what's termed a lawful development certificate, seeking a legal determination that that is permitted development and they have that certificate. And the works were shown on there, so the works that have been undertaken fall within that. So, you know, what's been built and what's been built out here has the benefit of planning permission. Our job now today is to decide on this structure alone. And I think, you know, to do otherwise would lead us astray, Chair.
My point was that I was really trying to ascertain the actual height of that relative to the next door neighbour's garden.
I think it's nine metres we've been... eventual height would be. This is on top of a six metre, is that right? Let's have questions on anything in the rest of the report. Got a comment on South Downs, but it's of some distance. Winchester Trust are objecting because they say there's a visual impact. But in your report, it says that there will not be a visual impact. Could you expand on that?
Yes, so my assessment of the application and in terms of will it create any adverse visual impact is it's set well within the property's boundaries, retained entirely to the rear of the main house. There are no obvious views of the proposed structure from the wider setting of the surrounding area. Glimpses of the proposed structure, as I mentioned in my report, may be achieved through the vehicular access to the rear of the application site, through the vehicular access off of St Giles Hill. Other than that, and as I say, where it is glimpsed from the public realm, it's a lightweight structure. The materials are high quality and in my assessment, it's a sympathetic addition to the original property.
Thank you, that's helpful, thank you. Councillors, any further questions on anything else in the report? Otherwise, we're going to debate. Debate, councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. I have to say I share councillor Radcliffe's concerns about permitted development rights. This is a national government policy which does allow a huge amount of building to go on in people's back gardens, which in most cases is fine and there are restrictions on what is allowed. Although those restrictions have been significantly increased in terms of what's allowed recently. But nevertheless, it does mean that in particularly difficult situations like this, where it's a conservation area, it's a very historically sensitive area, it's a very well-loved, built-up area overlooking Winchester with very concerned residents, I can understand how the amount of development that's gone on in this back garden has caused a huge amount of concern and consternation. Nevertheless, it is permitted development and we have to go by national government policy. They have a national... have a national they have a certificate of legal development and so on. So, in terms of the actual the application in front of us, and that is what we have to look at, we can't look at the bigger picture, we can't look at the implications for anything else, we just have to look at the proposal before us, which is for a very slimline metal structure, which is going to have wooden presumably louvers on the top, sunshade over the existing patio. I can't see that there are any material considerations, planning considerations, that we could cite that would allow us to legitimately turn this application down. Though whilst I completely share the residents' concerns, and I completely share councillor Radcliffe's concerns about the national policy on permitted development, and I will be asking our officers to see if there's anything that we can do about this, in particularly in conservation areas for our new local plan. We have to deal with what's before us and what our policies are at the moment, and I can't see turn this down, so I will be supporting the officer.
Thank you. Any further contributions to debate? Councillor Pearson?
Thank you Chair. I've got to say, I'm very nervous about this application. I'm staggered by the amount of developments being allowed by permitted development. Frankly, I was on the naive belief it just involved putting one built structure in place, patio, pool, swimming thing, and now this. Any other situation, we'd be talking about creeping development, but it's all been permitted under permitted development. The other thing that makes me nervous about this is the description of a temporary structure. A Giles Hill prominent location, I just wonder how temporary it would be. Can one of the gales we get coming in across there? Presumably, it's designed to withstand, what's the strongest gale we've had? Ace, Force Eight? That sort of wind velocity. I've seen this sort of thing before, the back of a pub, smoking area, where you've got this metal frame with effectively a canvas roof, which I presume is very similar to the sort of thing we're talking about. If that was the case, and we weren't talking about permitted development, I would ask questions whether this is appropriate in the back of a building like this particular one. Basically, what we're saying, our hands are tied. I'm very reluctant to agree to this, but I can't, as councillor Russia said, I can't see any planning reason why, how we can turn this down. I mean, if we do, we've got, which could act, well, great, turn it down, let it go to the planning inspectors sort it out. I don't like doing that, it's our job to sort this out. And so I very reluctantly, Jordan, thank you for your report, it was very informative, reluctantly, reasons I've said, I'd go along with your decision. Don't like it. I can't come up with any reason to say no.
councillor Reed?
Thank you Chairman. Just going back to the levels, if you look at the photographs, the level of the patio area that is affected appears to be the same height as a patio would be, if you look at it in relationship to the existing property stands behind it. I think where there have been raised levels has come further down plot, or the swimming pool as we were instructed, had to be raised X number of feet. So rather than digging artefacts up, as you could say, they've actually buried them a lot deeper. When you look at the area aged ninety, you will see this is an area that's already been used for social activities. It's got the Peter Hove, and it's got the table, it's got the easy chairs. So it's an area that's already in use, and I think all they're trying to do is to get a little bit of shade, and this was the reason why I asked the question as to what time of the day this, because this actually faces west. So you get the late afternoon sun right into this area, I would guess. With regards to the wall, the question about the trellis work, I think that's imperative that something like that stays, because that will actually shield not only the neighbour, but it'll also shield the applicant from looking down onto the neighbour's property. Unfortunately, the only way that you could do anything about that is down to the neighbour to probably look at his planting regime, which would help to mask it. I think Chair, that once again, there is no planning reason at all that I can see why this application should not be granted. Therefore, I'm in line with
I can see that nobody else wants to speak, and I agree with councillor Russia, you can't penalise applicants for what's been lawfully built. There is a lot of permitted development rights having been built, but, you know, that's allowable. And the case officer, Jordan, listed the reasons why this is considered as permitted development rights, and we would lose an appeal should it be refused and go to appeal, and then probably be awarded costs because we've been told that there are no planning reasons to object to it. It's only here because of its distance, or small distance, from the boundary wall. That's the only reason it's here. Otherwise, it could just have been accepted as permitted development rights. So, yes, people might feel bothered by something else going in in addition to all the other permitted development rights, but that is the homeowner's right to do that, quite lawfully, as this is really. So, yes, I see no planning reason to object to it. So, let's go to the vote. This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour please show. And those against. And abstention, one. Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. We have one more item to deal with this morning. You're very welcome to stay, members of the public, but we will quite understand if you don't wish to do that. We'll just wait a few minutes for changing case officers and changing the screen to the next application. So we move on to agenda item nine, which is twenty-one slash oh one six two three slash F U L. This is at Wayfarers Barn, Abbotston Road, Fob Down. It's change of use of agricultural land to residential garden and development to provide a garage. Case officer is Cat Watson, and when you're ready Cat, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you Chair. The application site is situated in open countryside. There is the existing building there is a barn that has been converted to residential use under class Q of the general permitted development order. The proposal was for the extension of the curtilage to provide a larger curtilage for the residential property. Under class Q, it only allows for a very small amount of curtilage, and the applicants wished to install a garage and extend that curtilage. So here we can see the original proposed site plan. So the red line denotes the amount of curtilage that was applied for, and then the hatched building here shows the proposed garage, which was a subterranean garage for cars and other storage. Here is the revised site plan. So the blue line indicates it's in the ownership of the applicant. The red line is the actual application site. So the curtilage has been drawn much more closely around the converted barn. It includes existing area of access onto the Abbotston Road and an existing parking and turning area, and then we've got a much smaller garage situated adjacent to the Abbotston Road. Here's the original floor plan of the garage. So if we look to the left-hand part of the screen, we can see there's access onto Abbotston Road. Bottom left-hand corner, that's the corner of the converted barn, and we've got a driveway which leads into this subterranean garage. This is what's now been proposed. So it's a smaller garage situated adjacent to the boundary hedgerow with Abbotston Road. We've got, again, the existing turning area adjacent to the house. Here's a comparison. So the top plan shows what was originally applied for, the bottom plan shows the current iteration. Here's what was originally applied for. So this is the west front elevation. So you can see it's been excavated into ground, quite significant engineering works, quite a large building. And here is what is proposed. So it's above ground, so there's no excavation involved. Much simpler structure, again, for vehicle parking and storage, timber clad building. And then here we can see the original proposed scheme. We can see the side elevation. So this is the boundary hedging. We can see that it pops above the ground, but mostly is excavated into the ground. Again, on the bottom image, we can also see that. And then here we've got the amended side elevations. So we've got the outline of Fob Down Farm at the bottom, and we've got the end of the garage structure and the other end of the garage structure. Here's a sort of a photo, sort of fit version of what you might see from the entrance to the site. So on the right-hand side, we've got the barn, converted barn, and if you can see with the red arrows pointing to sort of massing of the garage that might be visible from the access. Here's the site location of the proposed garage. So obviously, when I visited the site, the barn conversion was still being converted, hence why we've got some skips and general containers. But the garage will be situated in this sort of position, immediately adjacent to the hedge screened from the road. Again, we can see this, as you see the end elevation of that. And here we've got, again, the red arrow pointing to the location of the garage, taken from the site access. And then on Abbotston Road, where the red car is, that's the access into the site. So you can see it's heavily treed hedged. That will all be retained, none of that's going to be removed. And here we can see on the right-hand side, approximate location of the proposed garage shown from the road. And then the ground slopes upwards slightly as we move away from the house, approximately where the light blue container is, is where the garage would be. That concludes the presentation Chair. The recommendation is to permit, as the proposal complies with policies, that would not cause significant harm to the character and appearance of the surrounding rural area. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. So we move to the public speaking, and in fact, we only have one public speaker today, which is Martin Pratt, the supporter. Good morning, Mr Pratt. Would you mind sitting at the microphone on the right, because the one in the middle seems to come and go a little bit, and I haven't heard that problem with that one. And if you could move it just slightly more towards you, that would be perfect.
Is that okay?
Yes, that's fine, yeah. So the time will come up on the screen, and you have three minutes when you're ready.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning. I'd just like to say that our intention was to design a garage structure that meets our needs, but has minimal impact, and that's why originally we proposed an underground garage, because we thought that was the best way to hide the garage from view. And I think you've seen what we were trying to achieve in the officer's report. However, we met with Cat Watson on site, who pointed out that whilst underground, the access was quite wide, and would alter the landscape and be visible to passersby. And following our discussion, is that working, sorry, following our discussion, the position, orientation and height of the proposed garage has been chosen to minimise the visual impact from the entrance area and from the surrounding. I'm getting the impression this is not working.
It is working, maybe just a fraction away from your mouth.
Okay, is that better, sorry. Sorry, so following our discussion, the position, orientation and height of the proposed garage has been chosen to minimise the visual impact from the entrance area and from the surrounding and nearby footpaths. And the dark timberclad finishes of the house have been chosen to minimise visual impact, and the access, in fact, will be designed to be grashed, quite an unusual design of access, so that the access blends in and forms a transition to the surrounding countryside. And I'd just like to say that I'd like to thank the planning officer for her proactive input, because in this case, I think it's resulted in a far better design, which is improved and optimised, and is now well screened and forms a green transition to the surrounding area. And I hope you will agree and support the recommendation that's been made. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And any questions from councillors? Clarification? Councillor Pearson?
Martin, I'm looking at the position of the lake, which...
Councillor Pearson, I know you want to talk to the person, but we can't hear you if you do that. Thank you.
Right, okay, Martin.
You'd also need to hear.
I'll speak a little bit louder for you. If we get too close, that mic can get spat so you won't hear me. Martin, I'm looking at the location of the lake in relation to the garage. But metre difference in height between the lake and where the garage is, I see it from the map, it's sloping in that direction. What are you doing to make sure the, A, the garage isn't flooded, B, the lake isn't compromised?
Well, actually, the level of the garage is actually several metres higher than the lake, because the barn is at the top of the hill, and the lake is at the bottom of the dip. If you go down from the barn, there's quite a drop to the bottom of the valley in Abbotston Road where the lake is sighted, and then the road rises, so there's no flooding issue.
Any further questions? No. So we move on then to the report, and the first subheading we're looking at is principle of development, page ninety-nine and a hundred. page 99 and 100. And then we move on to Impact on the Character and Appearance of the Area, which is 100 and 101 and 102.
Yes, Chair. The bottom of page 101,00, as it refers to the garage front, will be timber clad. What is the actual footings into the ground? Because it's going to be very close to an existing hedgerow. The question is how close? Does this have an adverse effect? Things are put in to the hedge.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know about specific footings, but the proximity of the garage to the hedgerow has been very carefully assessed by myself and our ecologist, because it's obviously of utmost importance that the least harm possible is done to that hedge. It's an important boundary feature, it provides screening, and it's also important for local ecology and wildlife. So I have, I have... I don't think that there would be any significant harm to the hedge, as I've assessed in my report. And also, if I point you to page 105 and conditions four, five and six. Condition four is, prior to any demolition or groundwork, information should be submitted to and approved in writing regardless of the nature of any works to the hedgerow. And by works to the hedgerow, I've mentioned in my report that there may be some dead wood that needs to be, if it's going to be overhanging where the garage is, might need to be removed. But certainly no large-scale removal of any of the plants there. And condition five also protective measures to be put down during the construction period, so that any roots are caused minimal damage. And then condition six is a construction management plan. So that includes further details of protection during development, dust mitigation and also ecological stipulations about not removing any vegetation during breeding season and so on. So I hope that answers your inquiry.
Thank you. Yeah, the hedgerow is one thing. Obviously, in amongst the hedgerow are some fairly substantial trees. While they will send roots out, and it's the rooting element, which is the main, would be the main part. Looks like those conditions might work.
Could I ask you about the New Oxford Town Council's objection, which is on page 98 and is the only reason this application is at committee? So first of all, the objection is, should the garage be capable of holding eight cars? Is that correct?
Yes, I think it's Old Oxford Parish Council, I think, that objected. And the original proposal was very large. I believe that the applicant has classic cars as well, so he wanted somewhere to store them securely. And however, my, for the reasons I've set out in my report, I didn't consider that that proposal would be in keeping with the rural character. So the garage that's now put forward is much smaller and less obtrusive. But yes, that was one of the reasons that the Old Oxford Parish Council gave. And then they were given the opportunity to comment on the amended plans, and they still considered that the development was intrusive to the landscape and character of the area.
Well, that's my next question. Because I've been there and it's not, in my view, the board of suburbanisation, because there are trees behind it.
Yes, Chair, and so I've obviously taken the parish council's comments into consideration. They do raise a material planning consideration in terms of impact on the character of the area. However, I've assessed, for the reasons that you've stated, Chair, in terms of screening, all the structure, materials, you know, with the timbercladding that's going to sort of fit in the character of the area. I don't agree with what the parish council have said, and that's why I've set that out in my report.
It is a lovely view, but I mean, in my view, trees provide a nice backdrop as well. And then the other question is limiting future development in the garden. Well, we can't do that, can we?
No, Chair. Don't think, I'm just double checking that there's not any... There's no removal of permitted development rights, Chair. So when I assessed the application, the curtilage has now been reduced significantly. So it would be difficult, I think, for them to build anything that's going to be harmful under permitted development. But it wasn't reasonable to remove permitted development rights in this.
Just seems that as that is the only reason this application is at committee. Though we all love to give our time up to applications, it didn't seem actually relevant to bring it to committee.
I understand, Chair, thank you.
And we've considered them. Right, so where are we? So we were on impact on the character of the area. I think we've done that. South Sands National Park is mentioned, it's 1.2 kilometres, but not expected to affect it. And we've considered the dark night skies, boundary of the national park.
I think the national park's not in the immediate vicinity, but I don't, we don't have a, obviously, as you know, we don't have a dark skies policy at Winchester, so that's not been...
Chair, questions on anything else in the report? councillor Pearson?
Yes, I'm looking at the Ecology and Biodiversity section, Chair. Am I correct in thinking that the proposal is to include a green roof, i.e. meadow, actually goes across the top of this garage? Am I correct in thinking that, Catherine?
Thank you, Chair. To be quite honest, I can't remember. Perhaps the applicant can just give me the nod or...
I can't hear you, sorry.
Sorry, can you come forward?
We're having trouble hearing you. So if you wouldn't mind coming back. And just repeating what you said, we had the beginning bit.
So what we've designed is a grey roof to be subdued and sort of fit in with the house, which also has a grey roof. And in fact, the roof is not visible. But what, in trying to arrange to improve the biodiversity, we have native planting on both sides of the garage, which effectively hides part of the garage. And rather than a concrete or hard entrance to the garage in terms of visual view, what we've agreed is that the ground in front of the garage, which is the entrance, will actually be grassed over. So we're going to put in a geo grid with meadow grass over the top of it. Because we don't, for the reasons that Cat mentioned, it's mainly going to be used for classic cars, so the cars won't be going in and out very often. And therefore, the entrance area will look like it's a meadow, albeit a fairly short one. So we're trying to keep the whole area around the garage green, but the roof is grey, so.
I was just wondering whether you could have sheep or goats grazing on it.
Not currently planned.
Mr Pratt, before you, don't go, don't go. I was going to ask the case officer this, but as you're here. Condition nine talks about biodiversity. And my particular interest is not only all the species that have been listed, but in particular, swift boxes. So could you bear that in your considerations?
Be more than happy to include such things. Our plan for the site is that the whole of the area, as you may be aware, is going to be made into mainly a wildlife area. So any, anything like that, we'd be more than happy to include in the proposals.
Yes, it just says 'such as' but I wanted you to think about swifts, because they've lost their natural habitat, so to provide a new one would be good. And Hampshire swifts will provide the box. Thank you very much, you may now go, thank you. So any questions on anything? If not, this has been, application has been, oh, debate, sorry. I had a very long day yesterday, sorry. So debate? councillor Cleare?
Thank you, Chair. Just quickly to say, I have visited the site. Yes, it is very rural, but I feel the proposed garage will be screened, obviously, from the road, especially by the trees and the hedging. And I really don't feel it would cause any significant harm to the character and the appearance of the surrounding rural area. So I support the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I agree with what councillor Cleare has said. One of the positive things, when I first looked at this report, what I got as far as the ecological and biodiversity section was crumpled. This is a big building, even though it has been reduced in size. I hope that doesn't create problems for the storage of the cars, which is significant. If you're a classic car collector, that's a very important feature. I've got to say, I welcome your efforts to increase the biodiversity on the site. Always difficult to put a building there, or even though you're enlarging the garden. The question then is, you know, how can I get this 10%, a minimum of 10%? And I think from what the officer is saying, this is what you're achieving on the site, and I welcome that very much. Yes, it's a rural area, but there's not going to be, in my opinion, biodiversity loss. And I've got to say, I really do approve of the affordable homes for swifts.
councillor Cook?
I welcome the attention to detail and I look forward to perhaps driving past or walking past and seeing this interesting meadow in the front of all your beautiful classic cars. And as I say, I welcome the application and I will be most definitely with the officer upon this to permit. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Yes, I went to the site and took councillor Cleare with me. And it is the most fantastic site. You sort of look out down at the beautiful Hampshire countryside. And it is visible, because there are footpaths going past it. And everything has, so far, has been done very tastefully. So I can't imagine that, you know, that this addition will not be done in, you know, with best materials and so on. And so, yes, I support the recommendation. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
That's nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the mayor's parlour.
Mayor's Parlour, second floor, yeah.
Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.
May's Parlor, second floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I know we've stopped the audio broadcast, we're just going to have a little presentation at one o'clock for Simon Finch up in our office.
Thank you. So shall we go to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
Nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. So we have a lunch break now, and we reconvene at two o'clock. And we're in the May's Parlor.[707.81]